I call this public hearing of Fairland's Conservation District, you know, two orders. We will accept public comments and may act to adopt amendments to the district rules, regulating water wells within boundaries of the district, including Ellis Hill, Johnson, and Somerville Counties, Texas. Moving on to number one, Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess that's close enough. Good morning. We are having a public hearing on proposed amendments to the district rules. I'll note at the outset that notice of this hearing and the proposed rules was provided as required by check thirty-six of the Water Code and the district rules at least twenty days prior to the hearing. We've had the proposed rules available and up on the website. We've received some written comments and at my conclusion, at the conclusion of my overview of the rules changes, we'll also receive oral comments from the public. And if there's any written comments anybody wants to hand in, we can do that as well. This can best be characterized as cleanup. As you'll recall, board members, when we adopted the permanent rules, we know that this was a living document and as we lived and worked and implemented the rules, we needed big tweaks to address things that we encountered in implementing them. And this is largely that. The Rules and Bylaws Committee has met numerous times throughout the year. And you recall, the board has adopted some changes to the rule and implementation that we would by board resolution, for example, the semi-annual reporting requirements for smaller users, that we would later update the rules when we were updating other rules to roll them all in. And so, we also have some of that. Summarize the rule changes. The amendments will address a number of things. One is variable frequency drives. And one of the issues we've seen in practice with our field staff is that folks, for good reasons, have variable frequency drives on wells for energy efficiency if they're not having instantaneous loads put on their system. But we also encounter situations where folks, you know, when district staff leaves the property, certainly have the capability of increasing the power on those variable frequency drives and operating a well at a capacity that exceeds the capacity authorized by the rules or by their approved registration or permit, which often drives the ability of those wells to be located in a certain place at a certain capacity given to our well spacing regulations. And so, the rules would require, there was been some question on, we had utilized the term new wells, we will correct that going forward. Any new well, not as the terms define, but any well drilled after the effective date of these rules that has a variable frequency drive, and those existing wells, which will be given a half a year to make a change if they already had one before the adoption of these rules, would be required to put in some kind of flow restrictor, and we've listed a number that are available, that will physically ensure that wells are not capable of being operated at a capacity that is higher than is authorized in their approved permit or registration. We've changed the deadlines for folks to get a well drilled after getting an approved registration or permit from one hundred and twenty days to one hundred and eighty days from the date of approval. We've had a lot of folks, just because of the delays in doing anything that involves construction of anything these days, we've had a lot of folks having requests extensions and extensions to get those wells drilled or completed. And staff proposes that they just change that over to a hundred and eighty days. There's also extensions that are available and extensions currently are a hundred and twenty days, those would also change to a hundred and eighty day extensions. There's some provisions in the rules that were just temporary provisions and expired by their own language prior to today. When we were transitioning from the temporary rules of the district to the permanent rules, we're deleting those from the rules because they've already expired. We have changed to get water production reports and meter readings in instead of on the fifteenth day of each month to the tenth day, which was a request from staff. We have the change that we approved previously, I think back in January of this year, by board resolution to allow the small well owners that are permitted for less than ten million gallons annually and are not public water systems to do semi-annual reporting. We are eliminating in Rule 4.3, our well spacing rule, the requirement to do a geographic weighted centroid when you have multiple wells on a property for purposes of calculating well spacing distances from property lines and other wells. We, again, learning through implementation, we had seen an example that where basically an L-shaped piece of property had come in and where they proposed to drill the wells, the centroid actually ended up being on somebody else's property. Committee looked at this issue and has worked with the district's hydrogeologist and think that our current, without the using the centroid, our requirements that wells be spaced based on their capacity from both property lines and from other existing wells, including the existing wells of the owner of the property, will ensure protection of wells and non-well We also had a requirement added for small wells, exist wells that don't require permit. Currently, those smalls, smaller than seventeen gallon per minute household wells just have to be fifty feet off the property line. These also include a requirement that they be a hundred feet from existing wells, which if you have two neighbors that are each fifty feet from the property line, there would be a hundred feet between them. But oftentimes, we've got folks out there that have wells that were drilled prior to our adoption of well spacing regulation, and then somebody else is coming in and drilling a well fifty feet away. And because of TDLR rules, if they're truly pressured to allow them to be five feet off the property line, you could have two wells that are just fifty-five feet apart. And so, we spread those out where they are a hundred feet apart unless there's no location available on the property where they can be a hundred feet apart, then exception could be granted by the general manager. We clarified our provisions for drilling test wells. We add language in the rules that allow the drilling of the test well, but it wasn't fleshed out on what you need to include in application, how long after a test well's drilled that you need to either complete it or plug it, the purposes for which test wells can be drilled, and all those can be done by the general manager. And we fleshed all those requirements out. We've seen, just over the last year or so, an increase in folks trying to develop properties to get around the two acre minimum track size requirement for drilling a well for a household. What we see is folks coming in and doing what are called cluster systems where they put in one well to serve two, three, or four households. And that's a problem because we don't feel, based on our past work with our hydrogeologists, that based on the typical household use of a well, that two acres can support two, three, or four households. So, we make clarifying change that if you have a well that's serving more than one household, they have to have two acres for each household served so that they have the requisite property to supply water to the multiple households. We clarified our requirements relating to well screening and completion based on information that's included in approved application or permit. One of the issues we've seen with our well drillers in drilling is that they'll come in and in their application, they'll say, "Well, I intended the well to be this deep and I intend to screen it at this depth." But then they get out there onsite and are drilling the well, and the sand layer that they thought was going to be at, you know, two hundred feet turns out to be at two hundred and fifty feet. And they end up, you know, they don't want to screen areas that aren't productive of groundwater. And so, we changed the rules to provide that they should make a good faith effort for trying to complete the well as specified, completing, screening the well as specified in the approved registration or permit, but that they can adjust for where those sand layers occur onsite as they're drilling, so long as they do screen the well and the layers that they say they're going to screen. Because the layers that they're going to screen, the well in on the application drive how the well spacing calculations are done. And so, you know, they can't say, "I'm going to complete it in the Poluxi, the Hensel, and the Houston," and then only complete it in one or two. They need to complete it in all three. But where those intervals occur from a depth perspective as they're drilling onsite, they can take that into account. Another thing that we've come up with in trying to calculate the acreage of contiguous controlled acres for operating permits for retail public utilities is our rules are basically designed for retail public utilities that have, when it comes to a CCN, that have a bounded service area CCN for purposes of calculating the acreage inside the bounded service area. We've now come across a number of applications that are for what the PUC calls facilities only or facilities plus two hundred feet CCNs, which, you know, don't have acreage. Facilities only just has, the CCN only exists where the facilities are. And so, these rules clarify that for one of those two types of CCNs, that they get to claim credit for the acreage served by the utility in calculating the contiguous controlled acreage for an operating permit for those utilities. We also have, as you'll recall, when folks are seeking exceptions to the rules for spacing or for groundwater production through a compliance order when they don't have the requisite acreage, one of the things we consider is whether there is another water provider that has an economically feasible water source besides the one that they're proposing to drill available to them in deciding whether to grant them an exception or approve a compliance order for them. And what we don't, while we account for, when we look at what's economically feasible in the current rules, what the rate of that water would be compared as a function to the rate of the water use fee adopted by the district, we don't include capital costs. And so, we changed that definition to include capital costs in addition to the water fee rate, considering whether an alternative water source is economically feasible. We've amended the general manager's authority to enter into settlement agreements for rules violations, so long as the general manager enters into settlements that are consistent with the enforcement policy and penalty schedule that's been adopted by the board and incorporated in the rules. And finally, we spent a lot of time in the committee working on this and working with the Water Development Board, are establishing permitting requirements and increased fees for public water systems that have excessive water loss. We've seen some examples, even though average water loss in the counties is, in some is much lower than this, is somewhere between ten and fifteen percent usually, usually more around ten percent. We've seen some systems that have really extravagant water loss and they're just not going out and spending the money to fix their leaks, they're just pumping more groundwater out to keep the system working. And so, starting with renewals of historic use permits or renewals of operating permits or operating permits that come in after these rules are adopted that seek an increase in groundwater production, the board's going to start looking at how much system water loss is and requiring a water audit that is identical to the Water Development Board's water audit to demonstrate real water losses. For any real water losses that are in excess of twenty-five percent, that component, based on a five-year average, look back over the last five years because everybody has bad years now and then, but look on a five-year average, if you have what we call wasteful system water loss, which is water loss above twenty-five percent, for that component of your production amount, you would go into the disincentive fee schedule for the next five-year period to pay a higher rate on that amount until it ends, until you fix the leaks. And so, and you could come back, you don't have to wait all five years, you can come back in any year and say, "My new five-year rolling average has now dropped below the twenty-five percent," and you're taken out of that increased fee matrix. That's largely it. We've, there's a number of other little non-substantive clarifying and conforming changes that we've included in the rules, but that is the gist of the rules and amendments that are before you today. I'm happy to answer any questions from the board. If none, how do you want to do this? Start with public comment?
We'll receive public comments on the amendments.
And let me know when we talk about public comment. Our rules provide that where are being recorded, if you will, please state your name, who you represent, and proceed with your comments so we get that on the record. Try to limit your comments to three minutes and try to refrain from asking the board questions. The board's here to receive comments, not to answer questions. Thank you. Oh, okay. You want me to do this? Okay, how about Chris Smith?
Good morning. My name is Chris Smith. I'm here on behalf of Chaparral Steel. With me also is Dale Harmon, Executive Manager for Chaparral. We have submitted a comment letter, and I'm not going to restate that. The primary concern that Chaparral has is with the variable frequency drive proposed amendment. And it's not with the goal, we fully support the goal of being able to assure compliance. It's with the practical availability of the mechanical limitations that are in the rule. The concern with a restrictor plate is that it could undermine some of the efficiency gains of a VFD by increasing the required pumping pressure on the pump side of the system. With the dull valves, those may not have those same limitations, but we've been unable to identify dull valves available for large wells. Here, we're talking five hundred and six hundred gallon per minute wells. Because of those reasons, we have asked the board to consider a possible alternative compliance standard, which would be demonstrating compliance with this gallon per minute pumping limit through record keeping. For instance, Chaparral's meters are connected to the cloud and they automatically pull the data from the meter. And using that data, we could produce a twenty-four hour average pumping rate for each day. So, for instance, on July first, 2022, when this rule comes into effect, there would be an average gallon per minute pump rate for each well. We think that standard would be protective of the top of, would be something that would eliminate the issue of interference with another well. And it would also be something that would be relatively easy for inspectors to verify because I think there's over forty-three thousand minutes in a month. And so, that's, you have to come up with some way to kind of make that data easily understandable. So, that's what we're proposing. We have more details in our letter, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that any board members have.
Do you know the software that you have, the intervals that it records in, do you know what those intervals are? Is it fifteen minutes only?
Right now, we're reading every minute.
Every minute. Okay. All right. So, the goal in the conundrum that we have is, let's say, on the VFDs, if, it's, they're kind of like dimmer switches for wells, but there's a floor and a ceiling on them. So, you can't go, you can't, you know, if you have a five hundred gallon per minute well, it's not an option of doing anywhere between one gallon a minute and five hundred gallon a minute because you've got a window that you have to be able to operate in for the motor to stay cool enough or not. So, you know, that window, if you're permitted for five hundred gallons a minute, and you can dial it down to, say, fifty-four hertz, up to sixty hertz, and that could take you from, say, three hundred and fifty gallons a minute up to five hundred gallons a minute. All right, you know, so your range is actually that one fifty, not the zero to five hundred, which that's great. But then if you have a pumping motor installed and say you're permitted for five hundred, but your range is five hundred to six fifty, then there's a problem. So, that's what we're trying to, we're trying to use common sense, and I appreciate your comments, I appreciate your ideas. The metering system you're talking about, you would be, my employer, we have the same type of metering system, and we're the exception, not the norm. So, it, normal well operators would not have the technology you have or the technology that we have because it's, I mean, it's fairly new in the Grand Skoda thing. So, I really appreciate your comments. I think the biggest thing we can do, both as operators and people actually work with the wells daily, is when we size pumps, when we size motors, to do it responsibly and not, you know, before districts were created, I think the goal, you know, any well pumping installer was to get as much as they can instead of, you know, a specific target. You know, we think we can get you seven hundred gallons a minute, well, you're not permitted for that. So, that's the conundrum that we have. But I do appreciate your comments, Eric.
Thank you.
Right, that's all I have.
Anything else? Thank you, Chris. Thank you for your time. Eric Collier?
One member of the board, my name is Eric Collier. I'm with Collier Consulting, and I'm here representing both myself and one of our clients, Aqua Texas. You have a letter here with some written comments by us, but I thought I'd kind of run through them. I think Mr. Sledge addressed the first one in kind of his rundown of the rules, and that is the intent of the VFD was for all wells that are equipped with VFDs. So, I think we can skip over that first comment. The next one, we have a couple of different items we'd like to discuss, and that's in page forty-eight, Rule 3.14, about the transferring of historical use permits or operating permits. The first comment is, it states that you can provide both a temporary or permanent transfer of your historical use permit, but not your operating permit. It states in the rules, there's just a temporary transference of an operating permit, so I was curious as to why not the option for a permanent transference of an operating permit? So, if there's a rationale for that. And in siding the well, it was noted that there's only consideration for the spacing and not for the groundwater production allotment, so I just wanted to clarify and make sure that was correct. And Kathy was kind of provided us the form so we can skip over that one. It looks like there is a form for transferring of that. And then, asking the board to define what an interconnect is, will they consider a temporary emergency interconnect as acceptable in order to be able to transfer those historical use permits or operating permits? And then, finally, has the board considered a series of systems that might be interconnected? So, is it a situation where we might be able to pass through from, you know, the first system to the second system, and the second system onto the third system in order for that, you know, final system at the end of the line that's deficient? Can we go through kind of a passer of those various systems? The next one is Rule 3.15 on page fifty. Brian mentioned that you guys, staff has asked for a change from the fifteenth of the month to the tenth of the month. We are curious as to the rationale for that particular rule change. In the case of Aqua Texas, they go through and do their meter readings just once a week. So, if they get their readings done, you know, right towards the end of the month and there's a few days left, they may not get that next reading until probably the seventh of the following month. So, therefore, they're not getting their reports in until about the eighth, so that leaves them, you know, forty-eight hours to get you their requirements there. So, it's going to be kind of difficult in order to do that. And with nine different systems and sixteen different wells, and then those operators going around to many other systems they have, that's going to be near impossible. So, whether or not that's a kind of a hard line you want to take, or if there's some exception you'd be able to provide for clients such as Aqua who have multiple systems and kind of an undue hardship here to get that reporting done, I would consider that pleased the board. And then, Rule 4.3, page fifty-six, when it talks about the district considering alternative store activity and transitivity values in your well spacing calculations, I noticed that the rule is for anything within a mile. And I would ask the district to consider this on a case-by-case basis. I would assume that a lot of the store activity and transitivity values that were extrapolated in the GAM are going to be much further than a mile. So, I think it's imperative for the board to be able to take into consideration. I understand we want it fairly close to the well application in question, but if we can show that, hey, the closest store activity or transitivity value that is in the GAM is twenty miles away, and we've got one, you know, one and a half miles away, I think it's worth considering of the board to take that as a case-by-case basis. And the final question on that would be if the board would be willing or able to provide where those nearest values that were used in the GAM to an applicant. Not everybody's going to have access to where those values came from, and I think it'd be imperative for some applicants to be able to get that information if considering an alternative value. And then, Rule 4.7, page sixty-five, we're just asking for an explanation to the rationale for this rule. This is the rule talking about approving spacing exception between two wells owned by the same owner. It has actually been in our experience that when considering encroaching on your own wells, that several districts actually find that we'll look at that somewhat more favorable than if you're encroaching on a neighboring well in the spacing requirement. So, I'm kind of confused as to why we're saying that we're not going to consider any kind of exception to rule spacing if you're encroaching somewhat on your own rule. If you're wanting to interfere with your own wells, that's your business, I consider. So, just a consideration there because actually we find quite the opposite in other districts. They, if there's, we're going to, if the rule's eighteen hundred feet away from an well, and we get seventeen hundred and eighty feet and it's our own well, they say, "Hey, if you want to have some additional interference between your own wells, so be it." And then, Rule 5.8 goes to the water audits that you're asking of, and as Brian mentioned, you guys are requiring the Water Development Board's definition of a water audit, but you have many operators like Aqua who take into account many other factors beyond what the Water Development Board defines as water loss. And so, in their audits, they're going to have potentially some additional laws that would not be considered by you guys, and so those numbers might be artificially inflated. So, we're asking how the district might consider that. And then, finally, one last rule that I know is not currently being considered for amendment, but during this review and in a couple of projects that we actually just started working on here recently and have talked some with staff about this, we have seen a disparity in the current allocation of fifty thousand gallons per year per acre. We find that to be very restrictive as far as using water for things like public water supply use. We've got quite a bit of disparity between your spacing rules and that allocation. To give you an example, we have a project right now about three hundred and fifty acres where we could probably site three different Trinity wells, all making four hundred gallons a minute. It would meet your spacing rules, but due to the allocation, we can get roughly a well that would make about forty-five gallons a minute is the only thing we can get out of that particular piece of property. So, would ask the board to possibly consider that, that we've talked some with staff and are currently working on how that came about, the rationale for that rule. But something I think the board should consider and with some further discussion and explanation, I'd like for us to possibly look at revisiting that at some point. To give you an idea, I also mentioned it here, you know, another disparity would be it here, you know, another disparity would be if you look at a private well on a two-acre tract of land, they get 25,000 gallons per day for those two acres. Whereas a public water system or a non-exempt well would only get 50,000 gallons per year per acre. So quite a bit of disparity there. So again, ask the board to reconsider that and take a deep dive as to how we came about with that particular allocation. And with that, I'll conclude my comments.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question on your number six about the water audit. What water losses do y'all have that are different than what the water development board requires?
There's things, Darryl, correct me if I'm wrong, but he's going to get up here and speak for a minute, but it's things like theft, water theft, that they take into account, illegal water consumption. And there's a few others that they put into their waters. And several other water providers did the same. And there was, I think, some actually in the rules that you guys listed out that they actually included in there. So the question is, do they have to somehow take those out and, you know, kind of give that to you separate? Or kind of how will the district, and like I said, Darryl feels a bit of a lot more of a regular basis than I do to speak to that. There you go.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Darryl Waldock?
Mr. President, border directors, my name is Darryl Waldock. I'm with Aqua Texas. I'm area manager of North Texas. We'll get to the question after my main comment. So we've reviewed this with Collier Consulting, and Collier has presented the comments that we have. But I wanted to just bring to your attention one specifically that I would ask you to reconsider. Specifically, it's rule 3.15b on page 50. It's the 15th deadline for the reports. Aqua Texas has about 400 public drinking water systems in the state of Texas. About 75% of those are smaller than 250 connections. And as such, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality only requires us to check them once a week. In doing so, we will have a read somewhere in the last seven days of the month on each system that will be followed into the new month by the first read in the first seven days of the month to get a week window. Our monthly reports don't come out until the 8th because of that situation. The two reads are subtracted and to compute a consumption for the system, pro-rated and produced with the reports. We internally don't get those reports until the 8th of each month. And as such, it will be really difficult. In fact, I estimate we'll miss your deadlines for the 10th. So I'd ask you to please consider leaving that at the 15th. I'm not sure what the five days difference does for you all, but it was a big difference for us. Other districts, we report consumption to the district on a six-month basis or a three-month basis. And so I don't know what the five days difference will make here. That's my main comment on the proposed change that I just wanted to bring to your attention. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you answer the question I asked, Eric?
The...
I mean, let me rephrase it. If the district's audit form is identical to the Water Development Board's, which I think takes care, takes account of line flushing, theft, fire service, I mean, it takes care of everything, what, is that, there's something beyond that that you would?
Yes. The, we're invested in utility, and as such, we have to think that way. And the water loss numbers that we get basically produced minus sold, that's the water loss. So theft, any unauthorized use by a customer, that's all considered water loss. And that's our problem.
Right. And so we, and if you, if you look at the way the Water Development Board defines those rules and our incorporation of those into these rules, you know, there's apparent loss, and then there's real loss. Real loss is landings and only landings. Oil, like it could be storage tank overflow. But any of, any of the things like theft or billing problems or line flushing, all of that is, is not real loss by definition.
And I understand the Texas Water Development Board program, we use it on a couple of occasions.
Yeah.
But this, this definition of loss versus unsold water is where we have some struggles.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
That's all I think I have in interpreting the sign of she, oh, I thought I was going to go. Buck Benson. Oh, you didn't say you were speaking. I'll put a yes for you.
No, thank you.
Buck Benson.
Sorry, Dr. Ted. I really don't have Buck Benson for Martin Marietta Texas. I don't really have much to add other than I echo what Mr. Smith said about the VFDs. I think our concern is that, you know, I'm not a well grower, and I'm not an expert in the field, but that there may be, there may have be a physical limitation that we can install in one of our larger wells. So what, you know, what do we do in that event? And if there is a physical restrictor that we can use, obviously we comply. But in the event that there's not one that's commercially available, or that the one that we may want to use hampers or damages our pump long-term, we certainly wouldn't want to do that. We'd request that the board look at alternative ways to measure, to confirm compliance with the rule. I think that's the same thing that Mr. Smith said. So that's really all I have. And I appreciate y'all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Buck. Any questions, Buck? Is there anybody else that wishes to provide a comment on the rules? Mr. President, I'll turn it back over to you. Oh, I think Mr. Smith.
I've just got one question in general. Buck, do you know if the wells that they have now, do they have any VFDs installed now?
Yes, sir. One is.
Okay. But do you have any wells that are full speed or out of compliance?
I don't believe so. I was checking with the client. I don't think we do, as far as I know right now.
Okay. And just to kind of reiterate from before, the goal is if, you know, things are sized correct, there's nothing to worry, there's nothing to do. It's when they're way oversized is when there's a problem. So, you know, even something marginal, there's not, it's the, if you're on the, your range is 350 to 6, and you're doing...
Seven.
Yeah, seven. There's, okay. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I think that's, yes, I understand. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
At this time at 9:41 a.m., the board will recess and close consecutive sessions. Consult the legal counsel on the proposed rule amendments through section 551, 071, government code. No final action will be taken during closed session. Thank you.
I'll come back in.
11:33 a.m. The board is reconvening open session, open to the public. No final action was taken during closed session. Okay. Brian?
Yes, Mr. President. Based on the comments received, I wanted to, in just in our review of the rules and catching a few typos and stuff since we publication in today, I wanted to recommend a few changes to the rule. And because of the limited number of comments we've received, I think we have time to give brief explanation of some of the, response to some of the comments received, which is my explanation, not the board's. But I would recommend on this issue of the variable frequency drives that we include a provision at the end of that new requirement in rule 3.7 that allows folks to come in and get approval from the board for any alternative method of demonstrating to the board that even though they have a variable frequency drive and they don't have one of the restrictors listed here, that they can assure, they can demonstrate to the board that they won't exceed their authorized production capacity. We allow a provision that would give folks an ability to seek approval to the board of an alternative method. There were a number of things, a couple of comments. You get into, when you do something as risky as at a point in time, now almost three years ago, in adopting permanent rules, defining what a new well is versus an existing well, then you want to come along and have amendments later and talk about those amendments applying to wells that are drilled after the date of the amendment. You call that a new well versus an existing well. You get into the, so there's a number of places to those rules where we had sloppily said a new well, meaning a new well after these amendments are adopted. But because new wells defined as something that happened after the permanent rule that was adopted in 2018, we'll not say a rule drilled after the date of adoption of these amendments, after, or after these amendments are going to affect January 1, 2022. So change those references to January 1, 2022 for wells that exist before where appropriate throughout the rules. There were, one of the things we noticed after publication was that we have some provisions in rule 3.15 on water production reports, that water production reports will also include a description of system losses. And we don't want that to be duplicative of the new water audit and real loss reporting requirements. And so we would go into the end of rule 3.15 where it currently talks about providing a description of water losses from your system for public water systems, and just instead require that in the end-of-year water production report for a retail pub utility, that they include the water audit in the last report for the year, for December that's due in January. And that would also help, since these things will come up and folks will have to do them when they're permanent, are renewed in five years, that will help get those done, especially for small systems that don't do them on a regular annual basis anyway. We'll have those on file by the time they come up for renewal, and it won't be like, oh, you have to go recreate this data for the last, you know, each of the last five years. We'll get that as they go. And so that's all, just one requirement. And we'll make real clear in the rules that our water audit, water audit form is going to be the exact same thing that the Water Development Board already requires. We're not asking the systems to do something different than they already. Also, in this new language about facilities only, facility plus 200 feet CCNs, both in rule 4.3c and rule 5.3, you know, we make clear in the proposed amendments that it's the, it's the property served by those, these are CCNs that the AUC does not issue anymore, by the way. You can't go in today and get one of these types of CCNs. But they're out there already. So how do we calculate contiguous control of acreage for these types of CCNs when they come in? And we've seen a few of them of late. And so it's for the properties actually served. So just trying to treat them as equally as possible as we can with the bounded surface areas CCNs. We make some language requirements that basically say, look at the properties that are actually served by the facilities only or the facility plus 200 foot CCN. And basically, you're drawing a polygon around those properties actually served by those facilities. And then we would treat those systems the same as we would a bounded surface areas system. We would treat that polygon created by the property served as, as property served, just like we would a bounded surface area CCN. They can utilize that for purposes of meeting a minimum spacing requirement, for purposes of doing well spacing calculations from the boundary of the CCN, would be the boundary of that polygon. Just making sure that's real clear. And there were a couple of places we claimed that up to make sure it's clear, but it's really no different substance than it was as it was published. We just made that clear. We had a comment received on changing the reporting, monthly reporting deadlines from the 15th to the 10th. Some folks claimed this would create hardship on them. And I would recommend that we just leave it as the 15th because if it's going to, just a few folks that did show up today, if that's one of the things they've noticed, there's probably more folks out there that that would catch off guard, and we'd end up getting people in the enforcement system that we don't want the enforcement system. So we'd recommend just leaving all those January, or monthly 15th dates as the 15th instead of moving them to the 10th. There was a question on why we allow a temporary transfer or permanent transfer of an HUP, but only allow a temporary transfer of an operating permit. Well, the answer to that is, and we're going to make sure that it's clear in there, we're not talking about a change in ownership. Somebody can have a change in ownership of an operating permit. But the reason that we addressed this for HUPs and the language is carefully crafted there is because under the Supreme Court's opinions on districts' ability to protect historic use, it's, you can't, you can't move a historic use permit from one spot and one purpose of use and move it over here for, you know, to a different place for a different purpose of use. It's for the, it's for the historic purpose and amount. And so we had a situation that caused us to allow this to start, put this in here in the first place, was we had a public water system who had facilities problems, it couldn't serve its customers, and had an interconnect with an adjacent system, and asked them to serve those customers. But the second serving system didn't have enough HUP authorization itself to serve both its customers and the system that was helping out on a temporary basis by the facilities. So we came up with this deal and said you could temporarily transfer authorization from the troubled system under their HUP over this system, so the system doesn't bust a permit by, get a permit by production violation for helping. But we also clarified that the ability to transfer the HUP is only to serve the system that was being served. You can't just transfer it and go do other things, consistent with the Supreme Court opinions on this stuff. And so we allow that. And we also had a situation that we discussed, well, what if this thing permanently closes down, they're never able to get back on their feet, fix their facilities, and this HUP permanently do that? But yeah, they can. But they can only, they can get the HUP, but it's still to serve those customers that were being served by the other, by the other system. Okay? And we'll allow a temporary ability, but operating permits are kind of a different thing. Operating permits aren't based on historic use. They are based on how many acres of groundwater rights around a well do you have, which is the basis for your authority to produce groundwater from that well. And so we said, well, if this was the same hypothetical, if a system got into trouble and needed to transfer production authority temporarily, and the system were able to do it temporarily, that's fine. They can do it. If we're talking about something that's on an ongoing basis, well, we need to make sure on an ongoing basis that because the basis for an operating permit is to be producing water off of acreage contiguous to the well, that folks have the necessary acreage to produce water on an ongoing permanent basis. They have, so from the previous hypothetical, if this system just went out of business and this company wanted to come over and just change ownership and take over that system and put well, you know, fix their wells or put new wells in inside that system's area, you know, they could do that. They could get an operating permit. They could take over the operating permit. They could get a new operating permit. They can't They can't pump them out of these wells that may or may not even be contiguous property. If this adjacent system were immediately adjacent and they were to go revise the CCN to pull in that acreage, they could do that, but that would just be an amendment to their CCN or amendment to their operating permit because they now they have four acres. It's really just how are we, because the authority for operating permits is based on the acreage around the well, we're not going to allow a permanent transfer of that over to another set of wells that may not be in that same area. Just to answer that question. And yes, the form will be created. An emergency interconnect will suffice and a series of systems, yeah, that's fine too. I addressed that. There's a, there's a request to consider alternate store activity and transmissivity values in most basic calculations that are more than a mile. We're not recommending a change in that. If it's more than a mile, there's already provision in the rules that says that folks can ask for a well spacing exception. And part of what they can demonstrate in well spacing exception is that maybe they have data that's better, that should be utilized and can demonstrate that there won't be unreasonable impacts surrounding landowners. The rationale behind getting rid of the centroid, the rationale behind 4.7h, why would the district not approve a spacing exception between two wells owned by the applicant? For the very reason that folks, I mean, we can approve a spacing exception, but not to the extent that folks are, you know, folks can't comply with the spacing regulations for a two hundred gallon per minute well, which is what they want. So they go ahead and put in, you know, two one hundred gallon per minute wells instead, which has the net effect on neighboring property owners of being a two hundred gallon per minute well. And so we wanted to make clear since we're getting rid of the centroid requirement, it's already a requirement that you have to be spaced, that the spacing regulations apply to, between wells apply to any well, including the applicant's own wells. But we want to make sure that there's no gaming of the system that has folks putting multiple small wells instead of one big well in on a piece of property because they can't comply with spacing regulations for the larger well. Yeah, already noted, we're going to make real clear that the district's water audit form is going to be the exact same as the Water Development Board's audit. And, Mr. President, board members, I think that other than non-substitute conforming and cleanup changes to the rule, as already noted, I think those are the only changes I would recommend in response to the comments received. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
There's no questions. I would recommend a motion for a resolution twenty-one dash zero one one with approving amendments to history rules for groundwater wells in Dallas, Hill, Johnson, and Southern Hill counties in the form originally by official or with changes based on the comments received.
Those would include the changes I just outlined?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded. All those that favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Not any other comments, I'll adjourn motion to adjourn.
So, Mr.?
The opposed made second to adjourn, all those that favor, say aye.
Aye.
At eleven forty-nine, we adjourn.